Coming up early.
Do we have a prediction? You seen the agenda?
Taking the over.
Over.
I'm under.
Okay. It's six thirty, so I'm gonna call to order the Culver Town Council meeting for Tuesday, November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one. Roll call, please.
William Clodgers.
Present.
Bill Githens.
Here.
Absent, Sally McCardy.
Present.
Rich West.
Present.
Thank you. It's all Sam from the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Just like everyone to know that this meeting is being broadcast via Microsoft Teams and is being recorded. Participation in the meeting is your consent to being recorded and to the rebroadcast of the recorded meeting. Recorded meeting will be available for viewing on the town's YouTube channel. Now, everyone in the room and online, please mute your cellphone during the meeting. Thank you. Do we have approval for the minutes of the November ninth meeting?
So moved. Second?
Motion has been made to approve the council minutes for November nine. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. We don't need, we need to, since he's on to it, we don't need to because of her, right? Next on the agenda, Mary Ann Newsbaum for an art event. Mary Ann?
Thank you. We are here because we would like to put together an art event for next September, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and twenty-fifth, which seems like a long way away until you realize people are making plans that long ago ahead. And we have participated in several of these events, which bring artists from all over the region and sometimes a little farther away, anywhere from twenty-five to fifty or even more possibly. They come on their own and participate with plein air painting and social gatherings and public art sales of local paintings that they've made. And it gets to be quite a wonderful event. So what we would like to do is get on the Culver Council's schedule for next year so that it's an official for the city. And we're pretty excited about that. We've started talking to a number of people, including Bob Nowak and Tracy Fox and Matt Keedy, several others, and there's a lot of excitement about it already. So I would like to introduce to you the co-chair, really, he's the chair, and I'm the assistant, Jeffrey Baumgart. So, and if you have any questions about the event, you would like to answer.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Hi, Derek.
Hi.
Really excited about the possibility of that, this event. We are looking at one weekend. It's a three-day event countywide. I do have, and I'm just gonna add a couple of brief things. I do have a two-page abstract that I'm gonna hand out to you as soon as I shut up. But I want to tell you just a little bit of context. So I travel the country. I do a lot of these paintouts. I do a lot of these plein air events around the country. I've made my livelihood in the professional theater for over thirty-five years and partnerships. When I was here in, I was here in the summer for about a week and a half, and I was painting around town. You might have seen me. But invariably, I met a lot of people. That became dialogue of how can we maybe create an event? As we had to talk about, as we got thinking about it, what was most important, it was that we do it with partnerships. So we immediately started reaching out to people in the, in the community, creating, as Mary Ann alluded to, a steering committee. Really, the first partnership, I participated in Converse. It's Converse, Indiana Paintout. And they have partnered with us. I did a couple of the, I guess, four or five years ago, the first couple of them, and I said, why are you guys doing this every other year? And they said, we're a rural community, so we can't every year go with our hat in our hand to the local bank, which happens to be First Farmers. And as you know, that's their corporate office down in Converse. This last, this last paintout is where I met Mary Ann. When I found out she was both from Culver and a painter, I asked her to co-chair this event. So we've partnered with with Converse, with that paintout. Alon Waters runs that. I'm originally from Fort Wayne, Indiana, so we partnered with Fort Wayne Artist Guild. They are going to, I think, serve as a sanctioning entity, if you will. They will promote it so that we might find painters join us from that area as well. So if I may, I'll just simply, can I just approach and hand?
Sure.
You're all right. And this is just simply a two-pager that answers a lot of questions that I don't have to sit here and waste your time dealing. Thank you. I could be a couple of those. So again, it is a countywide three-day event, September twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. We have partnered with various organizations, certainly the academy, as you mentioned, Bob Nowak. He's very much on board. I invited him to this meeting to show support last night, and he had to send regrets because he's in Colorado. I didn't know that through tomorrow night. So he would be here with us and is in spirit. But that is a nice representation of our having support from the academies. You mentioned Tracy and certainly the farmer. So you, what's that?
I'll interrupt and say that we got good support from the library.
I know you did.
Yeah, you heard about that. Good. And also from the Lions Club, we were pretty sure about that. Have you heard anything about that?
No, I'm president, I'm president of library board, so I'm well aware of.
Aaron has been great.
Aaron's, you talked with Aaron.
He's been very excited about helping, so.
So we will hope to have the library host, I think, in their presentation room on Friday night. We'll do probably a meet and greet. We can meet the artists coming in. The budget's gonna reflect probably twenty-five painters, but we anticipate well over forty. I just thought, because it's the first year. I did this in Michigan City as a partner with Converse in two thousand and eighteen, and we had, I think, forty-four painters. It represented five states, Washington State included, and winning the thing, which was really cool. So you'll see this, that it is over five thousand dollars in awards that are included in that. Again, it's in there, so I don't have to be redundant, including purchase awards. So let's say it's the root beer stand. Let's say it's Lake House. Let's say it's Boppa's. They might put together, put forward three fifty, four hundred, probably five hundred dollars. These events around the country often have these purchase awards. There's usually six to eight of them. Okay? You might have ten to a dozen to twenty painters show up to paint the root beer stand or a home on the lake or a farm or an apple orchard, okay? They put four or five hundred dollars, and then they can select of those twelve or whatever number of painters. They kind of go, that's a nice painting. We'll have that. That helps us get caliber of, if you will. It helps us attract a higher quality of painter from around the country. Another one, as I talked to Matt, certainly Visitor Center. As you said, the depot and Lions Club will host, and Farmer's Market, we will do what's called a quick paint. It's an airgun start and finish of two hours. Painters, put down your pencils, you know, that sort of thing. So people can actually watch, and they'll be painting twenty-five to thirty painters down at Farmer's Market. People can actually see a blank canvas in over two hours. See the fun. On Sunday, they will host our awards ceremony, if you will. It's pretty casual, but it's also an art sale. So that's when the public can come in and look at all the paintings that they've been seeing happening over the three days. I'll shut up there.
Great. Any questions? For you all.
Council, have any questions?
I can't think of any.
Any suggestions?
Well, you'll come up with a more detailed.
We'll be working on it, but we did.
Agenda as time goes on.
My schedule.
Schedule.
Yeah, so we know exactly where everything is, what times.
And you'll bring that back to us just so that we'll know all about it.
Yeah. And I think per the, I don't know if we did the form that we have to get this point in the meeting.
There was a one-pager that.
Yeah, they've completed a special event permit, and I said, I think I shared it this, and it would be, I think I just planned it to the council in one of the emails, and then I also started, shared it with the department head, so they're reviewing it.
And that answers things like, if we're talking about alcohol at the library or otherwise, we'll work with them or not as to what the has to happen. But we're not asking for street closures, even though you'll see painters off in downtown, right on sidewalks, that sort of thing, but it shouldn't be.
They shouldn't be blocking things. And that's one of the rules that we go by, is you don't block spaces for other people to get through. You don't block.
Right.
And if you don't have permission to be somewhere, you shouldn't be there. But we're gonna try to get permission from a variety of property owners that would be interested. And usually that is pretty easy to catch.
There's two subcommittees to this effort. Bob will help with one of those, and that is that we now can use our ten-plus months to secure permissions at the apple orchard out of town. We can meet with the owners and they can say, you know, sure, like painters can have, you know, they can park in this second lot. So we'll do, when they do a check-in, and this happens in these events all around the country. You check in, try morning eight o'clock. There's a thing called a canvas stamping, okay? Because it's competition, you have to have a blank canvas. You turn it in, they stamp it. That way, a painter doesn't come in and bring in a finished painting of the root beer stand and go, look, I won! So they check them at, at the end of, and they just check, and they say, great, that was a blank canvas two days ago. Okay?
Yeah.
Wayne, do you have anything that you need to? As a police chief?
Say again?
I have some questions about the alcohol thing.
Great.
We have listed here, it's not, not to the general public.
It won't be sold. It won't be provided.
It's just for the artists, for the artist gatherings.
Well, it's city property.
Right.
They don't allow, and I don't know what the public library does.
Well, we're not sure either.
Yeah.
We have to check.
Hundreds of people come in, they have listed up here, hundreds of people. A couple took the law and brought.
Yeah.
That they see other people break, and even though it's not general public, well, they may take, they can bring their.
Right.
We don't have alcohol at city property.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. That's all we, I didn't know, we didn't know, so.
So as that, as that question keeps coming up, you need to get with Wayne and.
Yeah, because there's special permits and stuff like that.
We would, we would.
Yeah, that would make sense.
And I haven't heard about any alcohol at the library, so.
Okay.
Well, you know, we can, we can do the, find out how to do those special permits and what's required. So tonight, what we really want to do is to have you say, as long as you follow the rules, we'll put you on the calendar and let you say that it's, you know, it's on the, on the town calendar.
Yeah, the other, I mean, I think it just sounds very exciting.
Yeah.
It's sort of a, we're very interested in working with you to make sure that this happens. And I think it'd be an exciting thing in town. One of the other logistics issues, though, is that sponsoring organization needs a certificate of insurance. Correct. So I think that's one of our. It is on the event request form, but. Yeah. He needs to provide that, so. Yeah, so we'll do insurance, and then additional insurance has to be the town.
So just need to follow the rules that we've got.
Yeah, sounds exciting, though. Sounds great. Thank you for your time.
Counsel, any other questions from counsel?
No, I think it's a great idea.
So we, counsel, go ahead and schedule those weekends if it's available. I don't know of anything else right now that messes up twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, or twenty-three, four, and five of September next year.
And you'll see some of the potential conflict dates that we had to be aware of. Certainly, one of the first biggest ones was to be aware of the academy's parents' weekend.
Right.
There was, it was that weekend published several times. We're still waiting for an absolute confirmation, but we think it's seven, eight, nine, October. And I think we've had that, we've had that confirmed. That's the only reason that you have a second date from us that says, once we present this, uh, city council, we will have given you those dates. We have given you those dates, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Well, and as you understand, it's, you need to just keep us updated as to how this presses forward. Thank you very much.
That's good. Thank you.
Matt, Visitor Center?
Yes. That's a great segue, because I'll probably be the one that's helping with keeping everybody up to date on what's happening with that. I just wanted to come before you today. It's been a few months and first of all, thank you for your continued support of the Visitor Center. And there's not a lot of new information in here, but I just thought it would be good, kind of at the end of the year, to reiterate what we've been doing and what's been going on. And this front page is something that I put together for the dream day at the high school. I went and spoke to the students as part of the career day that they put together, and that was, that was really great. And it, it really kind of helped narrow the focus of, you know, what are we doing? And if I could just skip ahead real quick to the back of that page, I found this quote, and I really think it encapsulates well why you have a visitor center and what the role, our role is. And it just says, it all starts with a visit. If you build a place where people want to visit, you have a place where people want to live. And if you build a place where people want to live, then you have built a place where people want to work. And if you build a place where people want to work, then you have built a place where employers want to locate. It all starts with a visit. And I think that really just in a nutshell gives purpose to what I do and what the board does for the Visitor Center. And just back on the front page, just deepening, just building a little deeper into that. I would say the four things that we've really been working on this year is promoting, partnering, participating, and posting. And I know most of you are also on the economic development committee. I have found myself on the steering committee and on the communications committee and the quality of place, and I'm excited about that. And what I've really found, I, I just think it's wonderful that we're finally getting everybody talking about ideas and stuff and, you know, what the Visitor Center can do to make those happen. I also wanted to share, this kind of comes in, what Mary Ann and Jeffrey just spoke about, and that is events for next year. Most of the events are ones that we are used to, but we will continue to promote those. But we are very, and I really just can't contain my enthusiasm, very excited about the possibilities of the plein air event. Something that I would like to do, and I've spoken with my board, and there's enthusiasm as well. And I've also, I'm also on the Lake Fest Committee, and we met last week. And they seem to be on board with the idea is to just have a theme for next year for the Visitor Center that can kind of thread through the events and how we're promoting things. And the suggested one is Art is in the Air. And that can really, it's general enough that it can apply through all the events. But really, you know, it all, it's all gonna lead up to the plein air weekend in September. But like, but it also gives us the opportunity to promote some of the plein air ideas, maybe at Lake Fest. Jeffrey and I have already spoken about maybe having a couple mini-events during Lake Fest where maybe there's three or four artists that come in and do a quick paint or do something at the Farmer's Market, just to raise awareness so that people are more excited to come back and see the full event in September. There's a lot of ideas floating around with this of all the ways that we can reach out, but it all comes back to our, our idea of trying to reach out to outside Culver, to bring people into Culver to visit us, whether it's the first time, the tenth time, or whether they're now starting to think about, hey, I might want to start a business or to live in Culver. A couple other things at the very bottom, you'll see. Last year, I partnered with Janet at the library and Deb at the Lake Knox and Puckham Environmental Council or Fund. And we applied for a Smithsonian grant for a waterways project. Culver was not selected, but they have come back to us this month and said that they are extending it another year, and they would like for us to do it. So we're very excited about that. We are still waiting on confirmation on, so four communities next year will have it. We've told them which dates, Aaron and I have talked, you know, about what dates would be best or preferred. We're waiting for confirmation, but as soon as we know that, we'll have a Smithsonian exhibit at the library that will be about the waterways. And then through the economic development meetings, there's, I've met a couple people. One of them is very interested in having a beer festival on a property he's developing or special events and things like that. So nothing, nothing firm, but there's ideas and there's excitement, and the economic development is really driving a lot of this already as it's just now getting started. So I could not be more pleased and excited about the year ahead. So, any questions? One other, I quickly forgot. One other thing that we have been doing is we've been working on the welcome wagon. As I just brought the sample of anybody that is new to Culver, has not previously lived in Culver, is not a part-time resident but an actual full-time resident, gets one of these baskets, and a lot of our local retailers and associations have contributed very generously to that. So this has been going out. Kevin has been very instrumental in getting, helping to get him distributed and stuff. But the retailers and the organizations that are participating, I couldn't be more pleased. And I've been able to hand a couple of them out myself, and they're very, it really makes me feel welcome to Culver. So we're excited about that. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Do you have any questions?
I'll definitely be in touch as things develop.
Yeah.
But we're excited. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Matt. Okay, next on the agenda is Resolution two thousand and twenty-one slash zero zero four. And it is, I'm gonna read just the first part, Resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Culver, Indiana, approving an order of the Town of Culver, Indiana Plan Commission regarding, Plan Commission regarding the Resolution of the Town of Culver, Indiana Redevelopment Commission approving amendments to the declaratory resolution and economic development plan for the economic development and all matters relating thereto. Now, I know people don't fully understand what that means. So we have online tonight Phil Fasenda from Barnes and Thornburg and Kyle Carlson from Baker Tilly, who have met with the Plan Commission and, and CRC and gone over this. And Bill and Kyle, if you want to talk about it, please go ahead.
Absolutely. This is Phil Fasenda. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, yes.
Okay, great. Well, thank, thank you, Mr. President, for that introduction. I know that, well, last night at the meetings of the Redevelopment Commission and the subsequent meeting of the Plan Commission approving the Redevelopment Commission's actions, the Redevelopment Commission adopted a declaratory resolution. And pursuant to Indiana law, this is what's necessary to make amendments to the Culver Economic Development Area, or as, as a lot of folks call it, Culver TIF one or Culver Area one. And those amendments are basically to, to, if you will, clean up some parcels by removing them or clean up the, the TIF area by removing some parcels that have devalued over time and produced what we refer to as decrement instead of increment. Increment being the, the value increase of property from the time that the area is declared. And, and that increase or that marginal or incremental increase is what produces TIF revenues that are collected into the area and used for economic development projects. The area Culver One was originally established in two thousand and four and was amended in two thousand and fourteen to, to expand the area. And as you can see from the maps that I, that I see are, are on the table there. And, and I know that several of you, if not almost all of you, were in, were in tents last night and, and were able to hear what was presented to the Redevelopment Commission. But it is essentially that there are, I believe, ten parcels that are being removed from the area. The one parcel I want to bring to your attention that appears on the map does not appear in the resolution any longer because we were able to make the modification to the resolution when it was brought to our attention yesterday. And that is the Beachview Properties LLC parcel, which is fifty, twenty-one, sixteen, three oh three, one, five, one, point zero zero zero, and then dash zero one four. That parcel appears on the map still, and we need the, the county folks to update the map for us. And, and given the holiday week, that was not possible yesterday. And we expect that shortly after Thanksgiving, the map will be updated to, to leave in that parcel that I just read to you. So it is not being removed, was not removed by the actions of the Redevelopment Commission last night or the Plan Commission approving that action. So I, I will turn this over to Kyle Carlson in a second, just to give you the, a little bit of background as to why the parcels that were chosen were chosen. But I, I leave you with the fact that I think this is good hygiene for the, for the Redevelopment Commission and, and frankly, for the economic development of the town to eliminate parcels that are dragging down the, the, if you will, or lowering the amount of TIF revenue but appear in the area when the goal of the area is to maximize the TIF revenue. Otherwise, those parcels that are in there would not, would not be in there. So Kyle, if you wouldn't mind just a little bit of background for the council?
Yeah, this is Kyle Carlson with Baker Tilly. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Phil did a really good job of, of giving some background. I could add a little bit. Again, your Culver One area was created in two thousand and four and amended and expanded in two thousand and fourteen. And that time, the parcels that are in your TIF area, that net assessed value that they have will be your base assessed value. And then going forward, the assessed value is going to, well, you, you hope that it increases. Sometimes it can decrease. And for reasons that it can decrease usually are due to depreciation, demolition on that property or change in tax status or ownership of a parcel, as in, as in it goes exempt or the owner of it is exempt to pay taxes. And that happened with a couple of the parcels that are recommended or were approved to be removed yesterday at the Redevelopment Commission meeting. A couple of the biggest decreases. And I, sorry if you can hear my dog. I'm sorry. But the biggest, the, the total decrease that we were, we are estimating is a hundred and twenty-one thousand ninety dollars of negative increment assessed value in those ten parcels. That's all I have, and if you guys have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Bill, I was just gonna add one thing to what Phil and Kyle were saying. A couple of you have asked me about whether we're going to create a new TIF in the future. There are a couple, two to three properties that will potentially be developed next year. You guys know about the one on Tamaraque Road already. And as Phil explained to me, we typically will not create that new TIF area until we have an agreement with the developer and we work out some of the details of how that property is getting developed, et cetera. So there are a few properties that likely next year will go through. So there are a few properties that likely next year will go through a similar process to this one to create a new TIF area. So I didn't want you to think that we were leaving something off the table with this particular process.
Correct. And a couple of those parcels are being removed this year with potential to be added in next year.
Good. Questions from council? Comments?
What was the negative value? A hundred and, I didn't catch it all.
When we ran a valuation worksheet from the auditor's office, it appears to be that with those ten parcels, it's negative a hundred and twenty-one thousand and ninety dollars. That will be confirmed when, there's going to be an impact statement that goes out ten days before the next Redevelopment Commission meeting in December. And in that impact statement, it will detail out more of that information and it will go out to the overlapping taxing, the overlapping taxing units.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you all. Thank you both, Phil and Kyle, for your analysis there. Next thing to do is to go ahead and approve this Resolution twenty twenty-one zero zero four.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero zero four, approving the changes to the economic development areas that have been recommended by the Plan Commission and Redevelopment Commission.
Is there a second?
I second.
Most have been made by Rich, seconded by Bill Clevenger to approve Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero zero four. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks again, Phil and Kyle. Appreciate it.
If I could just jump in. Thanks again. Thanks, Phil. Thanks, Kyle, for your help.
Jim Clevenger.
Yeah, yeah, this is Jim Clevenger. Just to, just to follow up, Phil, even though this is the last action that the Town Council's taking, the Redevelopment Commission still has some activities ahead before year end. Is that correct?
That's correct, Jim. And the, there will be, as Kyle referred to, there's a notice that goes out, a newspaper notice. There's a, same day, the tax impact statement goes to the overlapping taxing units and we have a public hearing at the next Redevelopment Commission meeting on the twentieth of December. And the reason that we are, the timing is important and, and reason why some decisions were made with regard to parcels that are coming out now is just to be able to, if we complete it yet this year, the base date is January one, twenty twenty-one, as opposed to flipping over to January one, twenty twenty-two. So, so thank, thank you all for your action tonight. But yes, that's the, the last step would be the Redevelopment Commission meeting in December, which will be a public hearing.
Thank you, Phil. Nice job.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Do you think you need to be at that one? No. Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Okay, moving on. Stellar Plan Update. Jenny?
Okay, I'm just going to do the Stellar Plan Update along with the Town Manager Report because they're pretty well covered there. So I'm in the Town Manager Report right now and the first thing is that electric charging station, talked to Bob this morning and it looks like Rocky has a few days left on a job and then we're next. So we're still hoping to get that done this year. Second thing on the list is the paving and crack sealing, the community crossings matching grant that we did with all of our paving this year. I have officially submitted the memo and the reports that Karen put together for us to Endot. Haven't heard back from them yet, so I'm assuming there's nothing wrong with what we gave them and that will officially close out that grant. State Road Ten sidewalks and West Jefferson Street, Bob and I met with Mike Reese and looked at both of the properties that have drainage issues. They are working on getting us a solution in quotes for that. There's still outstanding, or there's still some money left on that grant, so we're trying to get this taken care of within the grant dollars. And we should hear on that fairly soon, I'm guessing right after Thanksgiving. Lake Max Trail Phase Two, which is a stellar project from Culver. We're still, as you can see, in construction with that. And as noted last time, we're working on Phase Four now and skipping over Phase Three. I did want you to know that one of the citizens on Plymouth Street has approached me about the alley running between their home and another home. There's still some water problems coming off of that alley. So I think ideally the next time our engineer is in town, who meets with Bob fairly, fairly frequently, the one from VS Engineering that's, you guys approved the contract for in North Lakeshore, I'd like to have him take a look at that alley and see if there's any sort of short-term solution or how we might address that issue of water coming off of there. Or, and or have Mike Reese take a look when he's in town again to see how the drainage is going to work in that area. It's just been really pretty bad lately with all the rain we had this past fall. Lake Max Phase Three is status quo. That's a regional stellar Endot project. It's still an environmental and that one should probably start moving into the next phase soon. Slate and Jefferson Street Trail, that's also a regional stellar project. It's in the very early stages, nothing new on that. I'm going to skip over to the water project with Midwestern on the north end of town. I'm still waiting for the utility agreement from Culver Academies. I've sent a couple of follow-ups with the attorney there and copied Dr. Bird and Andy Settlemeyer. I haven't heard anything back, so I'm thinking when we're there next week, Bill, we should probably bring that up. And I'll, I'll make sure to, you know, mention it while we're there. Next is the water project that is the, the well project. Bob met with Item and Peerless. And one of the issues for permitting on that property and for doing a well there is we have to find out if we have enough right-of-way on Davis Street to get the proper permit in place. So as I told you, an email communicating about this, when I asked the one company that got back to me for surveying, I asked for a quote for Davis Street in addition to the alley on Ohio Street. So you will see, I forwarded you guys the survey for both Davis Street and the alley on Ohio. One of the things that I've learned with these survey companies is they're all backed up right now. So I, two, two of the companies never even got back to me. This particular company is territorial. We've used them before. They're out of Stark County. And one of the things they told me is that they're a good three to six months out on surveys, but I asked if we could do the Davis Street project, get a quote for both those projects separately because Bob and I would prioritize Davis Street over the Ohio Street Alley. And that's why I had them itemize out those two bids and they did say they would work really hard to fit us in sooner versus later. So for tonight's purposes, I'd at least like to get approval to move forward on the Davis Street survey. To be honest, we should probably go ahead and approve both because I can't seem to get survey companies to call me back. Did you want me to read the amounts on those, Bill? I think I've.
Would you please, I've got it on my phone, but, well, here we go. It looks like the survey of Davis and Main Street with territorial engineering is one thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars. And territorial engineering for the alley along Ohio and Davis Street is thirty-eight hundred dollars. So the total together is fifty-four hundred and twenty-five dollars. Is that right, Jenny?
Yes, that sounds right.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
The, the alley survey again is how much?
Thirty-eight hundred.
Thirty-eight hundred, okay. And Davis Street is?
Sixteen.
Sixteen twenty-five.
And, and I think the required is a thirty percent down?
There's a retainage. Do you have those retainage amounts with you there?
I believe they're thirty-five percent of each total is what they require.
I make the motion that we, excuse me, retain, what's the name of the? Territorial Engineering. Territorial Engineering to do the surveys for the alley and for Davis Street. Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second one.
Motion made by Bill Clevenger and seconded by Rich to approve territorial engineering for the surveys of Davis Main Street and the Ohio and Davis Street Alley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. So that.
Real quick, if, if, if the town decides to include a well in, in a, as an ARP, ARP project, would this be reimbursable from those funds?
Being a utility project, I would say so, yes.
I would think so.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't set our plan yet.
Yeah, we haven't, yeah.
But I mean, the well project as a whole, are you asking it's the whole or just?
I'm just wondering if there's something we need to do, you know, to make sure we preserve the potential of recovering those as part of that, if that's, if that's what you wanted to do.
I'm going to start gathering, so.
Sorry, sorry for the interruption. I just, I just thought if we have a chance to recover that out of those funds and if that's what the council at some point elected to do, leave that open.
I mean, the whole project is going to be like, way more than.
Way more than what we get out of ours.
Don't worry about it, right?
Yeah. This is a drop in the bucket.
Yeah, I know. I'm always trying to get everything in.
I understand. Well, thank you.
Keep your options open.
Thank you. Okay, Jenny, next.
The alley on Ohio Street is now covered with that approval, so I'll move on to VS Engineering proposal. You all approved this at the last meeting, so Bob has given VS Engineering the go-ahead to start on that project. As part of that agreement, they will also fill out the community crossings grant application to pay for construction for that project. And then in the meantime, Bob and I are going to work on the rest of the community crossings grant. He's coming up with a list of roads to put in for that. And we will then apply for community crossings for both this project and the other roads that we come up with. And typically, just as a reminder, we use our, our paving budget funds as the match for that particular grant. So. Skipping on down to Park Department, I will have Amber cover Christmas lights and move on to the Stellar Project is status quo. The application is in and we're just waiting to get notification of award of funds from Okra. And then moving on, you, you already talked about the art fair competition with Mary Ann coming in and, but there's one other special event permit that we would need to approve tonight because the event occurs on December eleventh. This is a fundraiser for the Humane Society. Suzie Muller submitted the event permit application. It does include a road closure on Main Street from Madison Street to Jefferson, which is basically the downtown area. She had on the permit pretty much an all-day thing. And so I just wanted to make you aware of the road closure during that time. And then she has requested that we use barriers from the street department on each of those roads. So the action to take would be approving that event permit.
Is there a motion to approve that permit?
I'll move that we approve the event permit with the, that those barricades be the concrete barricades that the town purchased about two years ago, as opposed to just using plastic barricades to block off that section of Main Street between Madison and Jefferson.
Can I add, if you're going to, I mean, if you're going to use those barricades, they'll probably be up Friday afternoon and not be revealed until Monday unless you guys authorize some sort of overtime for them to come in and remove those. They have to move them with a forklift one at a time. So, and I understand, I understand the concept, but I just, I just want to make you aware that it's not going to be closed just Friday. It will end up being closed all weekend unless you take some other action.
I, I mean, I would be willing to suggest that we authorize some additional staffing time that's necessary to remove those so that it's not closed all weekend, but given current circumstances and recent occurrences as it gets proven, that the barricades be more substantial.
Is there a second?
I second.
Most have been made by Rich and seconded by Bill Clevenger that we approved the special events permit for the Humane Society fundraiser with the stipulation that concrete barriers be used instead of the plastic barriers and that we authorize the street department overtime for, to remove them so that the closure is not all weekend, so that they would basically go up on Friday evening and come down Saturday evening. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay. The broadband task force is next on the agenda. We've had recent meetings, also have had a meeting with a consultant from, who's now working for Thomas P. Miller. He used to head up Indiana Broadband and I have a proposal from him that I plan to have the task force review first and then we'll present to both the Town Council and the Redevelopment Commission. That was kind of the goal, was to work with a consultant until we get through this sort of technical part of the process. The Economic Development Initiative with the Crossroads Culver Team, some of the subcommittees have started meeting and I'm hearing statuses on those, which is really good news. We're moving forward. I don't have any more new news on the Ready Grant. I think some information's going to come out in December on those, so we should learn more. The annexation of Tamarack Road property, as you know, is going to be ongoing. And as I sent you an email, there's potential for another development on the south end of town and I'll just keep you apprised of those conversations that we'll be invited to, you know, start talking about. And Jim, I'll, I'll fill you in on that if I haven't already. I don't think I have, but I thought I should give you a heads up on that one and I'll, I'll send you an email on that. Blue Zones, there's currently a capital campaign, starting with some of the Crossroads members and Marshall County Crossroads team. So you may see some publicity on this. They are looking for some larger sponsors to bring the Blue Zones consultants back for a full, full-fledged project. And I'll definitely keep you on the loop on that because I'm sure they will want to talk to municipalities at some point. Emergency Services Agreement with Culver Academies, they had a scheduling conflict, so this got rescheduled for right after Thanksgiving. And Bill and Jeff and I will be going over to that and keep you in the loop. Otherwise, I think the department heads will cover the other areas, but let me know if you have any questions on any of that.
Thanks a lot, Jenny. Any questions to pour?
No.
Okay, moving on. Department heads. EMS.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Fire?
I've got a couple of things to run across the table. FYI, I have an EMT class that's going to be in Columbus. I have two or three people attending that one department. that's gonna be in Plymouth, have two or three people attending that one department, which is, we're running the L S, that'll help us with guys on the truck. Other thing, uh, we ended up getting some free tools from the D N R with compiled, I think I'm kinda guessing out of the box a little bit, I think we're looking at fifteen to seventeen hundred dollars for the tools that they gave us for free. It was a nice gift. Just a reminder, since in December, we're kind of busy, uh, Amber's gonna talk about the parade on the third. Also, we're gonna be attending the kids' Christmas, uh, Saturday, the eleventh, involved with the B F W and Alliance Club. Twelve will be involved with Marlene and Marshall County Basket Delivery, I think Wayne and Jeff will be involved in that also. We'll do the thirteenth, we always visit the nursing home owners and pathfinders and give them a little kiss from Santa Claus and say, you know, happy holidays. And that's about all I've got for this morning.
Thank you. Wayne?
Uh, did you check the copies of, uh, what I got from Ferguson and Rita? A little bit different, one place gives one more trailer, no doubt. Uh, there are some exceptions, one over the other one. The Ford does come with more light package versus the Dodge, the law. Dodge said they don't know when they could get one.
Okay.
Ford said three to six months.
You anticipate the same from Dodge at three to six months, if the board's out there, or you just don't have any idea? Okay, well, we'll just take it under advisement and we'll give you an answer next time.
I would prefer the Ford's not a little bit of a, I suppose, standing on the building versus Dodge, and we talked to other departments, or think it's a little bit better handling ability, people seem to be doing a little bit of, uh, life is better.
Does the Ford include the, um, the Dodge wants the inch additional restoration, does the Ford want to do the installed hitch?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that is part of the package, so there's no addition.
Okay.
At the end of the day, probably back a couple days later, so.
Let's say part of it, but their specs say it's not, so I don't.
What's included in the light package, is the?
Front headlights, rear taillights, uh, you know, the woodbag systems and the system that operates taillights in the back hatch, uh, has tint lights in it.
Yeah.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't have priced many lights, but we're gonna get nothing for the Dodge.
Right.
The takeoff about, uh, it's about eighteen hundred dollars, light package versus, but you're not far off what the Dodge price is, so either way, you're, I think you're coming in about the same.
The Ford is an Explorer? Yep.
Like, in receiving the reminder, whether one's orders, you know, preference side, we'll see if we can get this as soon.
Well, the sooner the better, I mean, it does, I mean, the, the car market is just a thought, right? So you're not even loading up the park lots, because it can't get the vehicles, you know? But where you see hundreds is a lot, now you're likely to see fifty, right? Because it just.
Right.
The order begins, that's why the Dodge, like Dodge, I don't even know why you'd even order sixty, or.
Okay. Bill, I'm just wondering whether Wayne has expressed a preference for the Ford in hearing the situation with the Dodge, um, is there any reason why we just can't have a motion tonight to approve the purchase of the Ford? Just, other than more of a chance to review it, but I mean, whatever the council's wishing it is, wishes are.
I mean, it looks like the Ford has better pricing and student delivery. So what I'm looking at.
Well, your trade-in allowance is better on the.
Believe in the basic price, the town, the Ford is thirty-five, six.
Uh, yeah. No, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm getting you. Whatever, whatever council wants.
I'd like to make the motion that we go ahead and authorize Wayne to purchase a, uh, Ford, um, interceptor, um, a net price total after trade of twenty-eight thousand, three hundred dollars from our report.
I'll second that one.
Motion been made and seconded to, uh, allow Wayne to order, uh, twenty-twenty-two Ford, four-by-four utility interceptor Explorer, um, price not to exceed twenty-eight thousand, three hundred dollars, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Brew, are you on for park?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Uh, so the first thing I obviously wanted to, to discuss was the proposal I'd sent you all for the park lights and the, and the garland and wreath hanging, uh, the proposal from Sellers that we had, um, we're looking to get that approved so that we can get everything up before the tree lighting on December third. The proposal that I'd sent, what, sorry, what?
I'm just saying, and the amount is?
Yeah, so the, uh, the total of the proposal is, uh, three thousand, nine hundred, eighty dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Which is a little bit of an increase over past years.
Yes, so as I, I had, uh, mentioned to you all, um, compared to the twenty-twenty proposal, uh, being three thousand, five hundred, thirty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents, uh, this is a four hundred, forty-two dollar and fifty-seven dollar increase, um, I did reach out to Sellers, obviously, that, um, that increase, um, I, we had some questions, um, I'd reached out to them and asked about, you know, the, the increase of that, um, their response was that, uh, the price was raised in twenty-eighteen and has been the same for the last two years, which is, I did look at the, um, other proposals, which is correct, it, it didn't increase the past year, um, and then also the rate has went up due to wages and is increasing, as we all know with the pandemic right now, um, labor right now is just at a, at a, at a high, so I think the combination between the wages, um, combated with COVID, and then also, um, not seeing that proposal increase the past two years.
Rich, this is Amber, question, um, I know you could not anticipate the increase, but was the base amount budgeted in your, um, the park's budget for next year, or for this year, I'm sorry?
Yeah, so normally, we just take this, um, out of the contractual services budget, so, um, it would fit within the scope of what we're, you know, what we anticipated. Um, yeah, we, we would be able to afford it, and then also, within the response to, uh, Tony Sellers had mentioned that they were more than willing and open to split that proposal, so fifty percent in this fiscal year and fifty percent next fiscal year, if we needed to.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Is there a motion to pay the sellers the three thousand, nine hundred, eighty dollars and seventy-eight cents to put up the Christmas tree lights in the park?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion made by Bill Clevinger, seconded by Sally to approve Sellers, then, uh, to put up the Christmas tree lights in the amount of three thousand, nine hundred, eighty dollars and seventy-eight cents, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Anything else, Amber?
Yeah, so obviously, we're trying to get all these lights up in time for our, uh, tree lighting holiday parade and caroling event that, um, was mentioned earlier, um, that will be starting at six P M. and run until about eight P M. Um, that's the plan right now, I, I do wanna make note, I, I sent out a registration form for that holiday parade, um, similar to what we had done in twenty-nineteen, um, unfortunately, we're just not getting a lot of feedback for that, so, um, there is the potential to not have the parade that evening if we just don't get enough, uh, registration participants, um, so I'll keep everybody posted on that, but i- if I've been trying to recruit, but, um, I think a lot of our businesses right now are kind of spread a little thin with the pandemic, so I'll definitely keep everybody posted. Um, other than that, we have, um, the Turkey Trot on Thursday, um, that will be at nine A M., include three different courses, and then also the, um, yoga that will come to fall at ten A M. and is free and open to everybody in the public.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all for me, thank you, no, that's all, thank you.
Thanks a lot, Amber. Bob, are you on for utilities?
I am, I have nothing for you tonight.
I have a question, I was talking with Bill today, um, can you give an update on the, uh, the heater or whatever type of device we were calling, we're referring to for the council room?
The last I checked with, uh, Mid-City, it was still backordered.
Oh.
Network, that was a week and a half, two-week-old information, so I can get you a fresh update if you wish.
Same thing.
Yeah, just stay on them with it, okay, thank you. That's all you had, that's all you got, Bob?
That's all I have, unless you have further for me.
Have you got any questions for Bob? Moving on, boards and commissions. Land commission? Go ahead.
I think you know that what we did during there as far as, um, passing that one to the US, uh, districts, um, my mission is still continuing to work on, it's only one district to, how about our updates with the test completed? Probably this is what it takes, at least to be. And as we can get it finished by the end of next year, and then things with the involvement still, as to. U Z A, um, they're active, probably the most active in the area.
In the area, in the state.
We, we've got a good group of people there, and, uh, but one of the things that keeps coming up and keeps causing us a little problem is the new home line of sight that we have a lot of, I think that's only in our L one district.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, we're working on making that language simpler and the restrictions less, so we'll, um, kind of get that done in the next two minutes, gonna be part of one of these moments.
Anything on unsafe buildings, where we're at on name, anybody?
Well, yeah, um, thanks to Bill Clevinger, the, um, most highly unsafe word, the property of Jefferson, the Rosestones, um, he just miraculously found a way to start getting that done, I know the unsafe word got authorized that cleanup, but, um, he brought in, um, Bill Chappell, that had been out there, the last phase of scrapping and cleaning, he does it pretty good, but as I talked with Bill Clevinger earlier today, when we demolish a building, that foundation needs to come out.
Mm-hmm.
And so these, they've done nothing on that, the building that is to the north there, it has some fire damage in it, it's a steel building with steel lappers and everything that's been fire damaged, money's been through, but I'm not sure that that is, is at a point where it's gonna fall down, but, uh, that was part of what the, the, uh, unsafe one wanted to come down, that has to be done, and we wanna move forward, and Mr. Clevinger, uh, will, is taking this on, so we can, uh, look at the building there, it's, it's in the, so, so hopefully we can have that done. Um, on another note, the biggest thing we have going on in town right now is four fifteen lakeshore, and taking out that foundation, that concrete, we're looking at that, um, then down there, checking the soils, looking for any contamination, any signs of anything that would be questionable, the sand and clay that's underneath, what, what they've got is, is good and clear right now, to the point where they've gone, um, they, uh, found some strange things there, there's been three different floors that they pulled up, one was about a five-inch concrete, then, uh, below that was small, eight inches of concrete, the separate floor, then about twelve inches of floor, one they found probably what was the original. I'm just assuming that as the street was built up, they had to keep going more up higher so they could get away from the water running, and this is probably from back then.
Right.
Drakers on the gap now, so that's what they found, there's three floors, and, uh, possibly there too, um, the other thing that we've got going on right now is that there are, looks like three. Just looking from the top down, I would say that they're probably around the five thousand to seven thousand gallon range each, um, got liquid in the bottom of them, that appears to be clear in water, doesn't seem to be oiling, but that's all gonna have to be pumped out and kept, and then, um, before the tanks can be, uh, and.
Right.
And when that happens, we'll check the soil around that, to make sure, um, and just so that. A little more background on that, and back in nineteen ninety-three, ninety-four, um, there was contamination there, they were dumping the oil out the back door onto the ground, and that, um, was inspected and taken out to the landfill, and what they're, uh, and as far as waste, it seemed to be associated with spillage on the bare ground, four old filler containers, those evacuated, and, uh, then that was bought new soil back there, and that's kind of that's north down there.
That was when they did the phase one?
Yeah, so that's done so far, but we expect, we suspect more on that, so I'm trying to stay on top of the realities, they're gonna go on, make sure that's.
And they do have, and they have, do you have a demolition permit?
Yes.
Now, everybody knows that.
And, so.
Any, any, any other properties to talk about?
Not, not in the close to that, I guess. Get those, we've got a couple that are in the county, it's outside of town, a little bit, uh, around this big, low-ten area, very populated with vehicles, boats, et cetera, et cetera, so, meant to, but I'm, county's aware of it, we're trying to, this, that.
Very good. Thank you. Redevelopment.
Our previous two meetings have basically been on the, uh, TIF changes and.
That it, okay, thank you. Anybody on, uh, line from the tree commission? Okay, hearing none, let's move on to clerk's report.
I just have one claim over two thousand for people, and that's from the Troy Group, two thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents, and that's. I just have one claim over two thousand for people and that's for the Troy group, two thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents, and that's what they're working on the property.
Your motion to approve claims over two thousand?
So moved, second.
Motion made by Rich and seconded by Sally to approve claim clerk's claims over two thousand. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And then the other thing I just have is, um, as we discussed in the work session, um, it was just to change the forty in the personal policy manual so that it reflects what is stated concerning overtime when an employee is called in on a week that has a holiday. They're not, they're basically paid overtime rate for those two hours for the call in versus physically work forty hours. So I will work on that change and. I'm sure.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Attorney's report.
Uh, I got a few things. Uh, first kind of following up on the unsafe, as you recall, we had that meeting. Um, I had made some, uh, an amendment to the, uh, unsafe building and property ordinance.
Right.
Uh, Jeanette hasn't had a chance to, she's still on vacation. Uh, but I, to keep things moving, I talked to Karen and suggested, uh, that we're going to need a, uh, public hearing on it. And I prepared a notice of public hearing for being conducted on December twenty-eighth.
Okay.
At the twenty-eighth meeting, so, um, if that meets with your approval, um, my hope is that we can have this in a, in a more in a revised form, if that's what's necessary for your first meeting in December, we can chat about it or whatever. Or it'll be set for a public hearing, so we got to provide public notice.
Right. Okay.
So, uh, I guess I'd.
Need more, more.
Yeah, more approval for establishing a public hearing on the unsafe building.
How long in advance do we have to publish on that?
Uh, I think you need it two times and it needs to be, uh, at least ten days ahead of the meeting.
You're saying we should have revised, um, ordinance?
Well, I revised this one that I sent to you and after our meeting on Monday, you all had a couple of suggestions that I wanted to take up with her and Jeanette, and she hadn't had a chance to fully review the draft that I had completed. Chuck, did I send this to you?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, but in any event, I mean, so we have a a pretty good draft at this point, I'm going to say.
Okay. Well, we're going to look at it on the first meeting, you said.
First meeting in December, we'll, we'll, we'll have a, hopefully a more finalized draft that we can take a look in if you have. Yeah.
That will still give us plenty of time to publish notice if we don't prove the, publish the notice until that meeting.
Well, no, I'm afraid that if we don't get it into the Call for Citizen, you're going to have to have it.
Right.
Today.
Oh. They, they're an hour, they're the week delay, right? They need a week ahead.
I thought that you were, you were talking about the twenty eighth of December.
It is.
But in order to get it in the paper and.
Two times.
Two times.
And ten days ahead.
It's mathematical.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a timing difference.
Yeah.
So there are motion to hold a notice of, do a notice of public hearing, uh, on December twenty-eighth to have a, um, based on the proposed amended and restated unsafe building and property ordinance. Motion to that effect. Motion made in second to do a notice of public hearing for our second meeting on December twenty-eighth to, uh, concerning the proposed amended and restated unsafe building and property ordinance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Okay, thank you for that, that, Holly. Or if you wanted me to publish.
We're gonna, yeah, I mean, I can send it.
I can send. And then, uh, getting to a couple of items that have been pending for which you, uh, given direction in the past. Uh, you wanted to have a no parking, uh, signs erected around the new charging station.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you wanted to have a, a stop sign put at Cavalier Drive and you wanted to have a one-way on Washington Street, so I've if you'll pass those around, there's one each of those three.
Oh.
Uh, ordinances.
Sure.
Uh, I didn't put numbers on them, um, kind of giving them to you to take a look at. Probably like to try and get them on the upcoming December's agenda.
Right.
Uh, but feel free, and I haven't, Jenny, I haven't taken a look at it either, so. Uh, hopefully we can, uh.
We'll take a look at it.
Everybody take a look at them, get them organized and so forth, but.
Are they the same as the ones you emailed today?
Yeah, you know, I think, did I email those to you?
Yes. They do, no, okay, and then I'll.
Like one of those days that I thought I told Molly to do that, but wasn't sure.
Yeah. You got to, you got to, okay.
Um.
So we'll look these over and we'll talk about it in December. Long story short.
Long story short. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you. Well, nobody wants it.
I can read it.
Yeah. I'm going to keep one just.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, nah, yeah, let me. That way I don't have to print it.
There might be two of them there.
Yeah. Save you some printing.
That good, sir?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone present for utility shut-off ordinance violation? Anyone online for that? Hearing your scene, um, next to citizen input. Anyone online for citizen input? Anyone in the room for citizen input? Hearing your scene, none? Counsel issues? Oh, you do? I'm sorry, I didn't. Didn't see your pencil. I just said I didn't see it. I didn't want it. Product of the barricades. That's the reason we walk. Yeah.
Yeah.
And we agree.
Yes.
So thank you for your comment.
As I recall, on your recommendation.
Yep.
If they agreed then and I agree now.
Those are asked. When somebody's, I can come down and pick one up and move it. Anything else, sir? Any other citizen input? Counsel issues. Rich?
Nothing.
William?
Nothing.
Sally?
Nothing at this time.
Darren, do you have anything? Jim, do you have anything?
I do not.
I got a couple of things. I've got a get well card up here for Bill Hamm, as you all probably know. Bill had back surgery yesterday in Chicago. It was a ten-hour surgery. Uh, apparently he came through it okay. And he's going to be out, uh, he's going to be at Rush Hospital, I think, for four or five days. And then in the rehab and he's the, what I understand, talking to Carol Ziegler's uh, his sister, um, surgery went well, so wanted everybody to know that. I also wanted everybody to know that there's going to be a town hall meeting at the Beach Lodge on, uh, Thursday, December the second. And, uh, public officials from the county and the town will be there to answer questions for all townsfolk, so it's open to the public. That's all I have. December second, Thursday, the second. It's from six-thirty to eight-thirty at the Beach Lodge.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second, we adjourn the claims. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Good night, you guys.
Good night. Thank you, Jenny.